Call to order the Islam Meadow Public School Committee meeting. It is December 4th, 2017, and it is 7:00 PM. As a reminder, this meeting is being both audio and video recorded. I ask if anyone else is doing so to let us know. Okay, seeing none, if we can all please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, moving on, we have roll call starting to my left.
Allison Stevens, student rep.
Bill Fonseca.
Rich Pacero.
Garry Thompson.
Deirdre Mayeau.
Gordon Smith, superintendent of schools.
Elizabeth Marcy-Boutrop.
Hamel Blair, assistant superintendent for business.
Kathy Solari, performance secretary.
All right, moving on, we have the approval of some minutes. We have the approval of the November 6th, 2017 executive meeting minutes.
So moved.
Motion made.
Second.
And second, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. Okay, hearing none, that moves, that carries forward 5-0. We also have the approval of the November 6th, 2017 regular meeting minutes.
So moved.
So far.
I'll move to approve the November 6th, 2017.
Perfect. Any further discussion on that?
Great notes by Kathy Slade, amazing how you can do this. It really is. I know it's riveting, but I just.
Exactly.
Sure is.
All right, so all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. Carries forward 5-0. Continuing on, we have the approval of the October 16th, 2017 public hearing minutes.
So moved.
All right, and a second?
I'll second.
And second, any further discussion on this?
Thank you, Mr. Smith, for the letter. I see you done.
Yep. And also that with that public hearing minute, there's also the link, which was very nice to attach that to it. So, thank you for getting all that together. So, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. Carries forward 5 to 0. All right, moving on, we have committee and subcommittee communications. And Ally, you can start for us, please.
Okay. So, right after Thanksgiving break, winter sports started at the high school, so that's all underway. And the winter concert for band and chorus is Wednesday night, so that should be nice. And also, next week, Ms. Norton is putting on a distractology course for, actually, it's optional for any students who want to partake in it, which I think it teaches you about the distractions you can face while driving and stuff, so that would be a good safety thing. And our senior projects will be taking place next Thursday.
Yeah, senior project.
I'll be there.
So, we're all getting ready for that.
Are you presenting next week?
Yes, I will be presenting on Friday morning.
Like the early?
I haven't done it yet.
I'm doing Thursday.
On Friday.
I'm doing Thursday.
Good. There's a lot going on in all the different schools for Thursday and Friday, so. Okay, well, thank you very much. Bill?
Real quick, we got together with an initial meeting of our group with, moving forward, cafeteria workers, so I'll keep everybody updated as we get dates and how we end up.
Great, thank you. Rich?
Two items. I had a pleasure being at the junior semi-farm hall. I saw Ally there. It was really, the kids looked great, and it was really a very nice time.
Yeah.
So, I want to mention that. And I was at a town council meeting, and I was kind of caught off guard as a school committee member. Gary DiStefano, for years been talking about finishing the athletic field, the bleachers on the visitor's side, and the building for the restrooms. And his approach, Joe Ford, and they've walked the field, they've come up with some suggestions. And Joe Ford kind of got the town council to have him be the representative. I think he's going to approach us, and he wants to be able to kind of take charge and get this done. He feels that to school, in fairness to the, to us, that we have so many capital planning items that the field gets lost in the shuffle. And so, he's going to be approaching, I think, you Mr. Smith, at some point, to kind of initiate some kind of a joint group to get that field done.
I think they were looking at some type of private fundraising. One of the things that Mr. DiStefano had presented a few years back, probably two years back, was that the concession and restroom facility over in Long Meadow was done through a brick fundraiser where you purchase. I don't know if the entire cost of that building was done through a brick fundraiser, because that would be a pretty expensive.
More expensive bricks.
But maybe some of it. And so, that was, two years ago, that's what Mr. DiStefano had talked about and discussed. And he had met with the athletic subcommittee two years ago, and we talked about the maintenance we do for the field. We talked about the revolving fund that's used from rentals, that if we can get to a certain level, it may be able to help us resurface the track when the track needs to be resurfaced. It's probably never going to get to a level where you can resurface the field. That's going to be a few hundred thousand dollars when that's needed. But he definitely has not only concerns that he would like to see the project finished, but he wants to make sure that we're keeping that facility as a premier facility, if you will. He also, though, has committed his own efforts in trying to make that happen.
Because there's quite a cost to that building that he's proposing.
Yes.
I mean, just going back to.
It's in our capital plan.
Right, but going back to when we first did it surf.
Right.
And it was proposed, you know, it's quite a price tag.
So, if you look at the five-year capital plan, there is an estimate for that building.
Oh, yeah.
Offhand, I don't know exactly what the number is, but I want to say it's closer to a million dollars than it is a hundred thousand.
Well, yeah, that's right, okay.
Okay, this is a big.
That's a lot of bricks.
It's a lot of bricks.
Exactly. Greg, do you have anything that you'd like?
Just two things. Went to the planning board meeting about the Chestnut project, certainly worth mentioning, 600 units potentially, housing units, certainly adding 10% to our housing stock in the town. I think there's some concern potentially for added students to the district, other costs that might include police, fire. So, I think we might do some more research, traffic from a school point perspective, but also from a citizen's perspective going forward. And then, the second thing, actually, Rich, was that we had another meeting with the basketball group, basketball court group. So, that's kind of moving along a little bit. We're going to stake out a potential spot here on the grounds, but nothing concrete yet, certainly anything more concrete we can bring back to this committee, so. Okay, thank you.
Perfect, thank you. Just a couple of things that I wanted to make note of. I did make it, I can't believe it's been a while since we had a meeting, but I made it to the Thanksgiving Day football game over in Long Meadow. And that was a fun time, even though we didn't do as well as we were hoping. It was still nice to be there. The crowds, I think we had more Islam Meadow.
Fans.
Fans in the crowd than on the Long Meadow side. That was a lot of fun. I also want to mention that I did make it to the professional development day at the high school to hear the speaker, and that was a lot of fun. I know that you are going to be touching on that later, so I won't waste too much time on that. But that was really such a great speaker. I thought I would just stay for about 15 minutes and ended up staying for the entire time he was there. And then, also, I made it into Mountain View. They had their assembly for their U Matter program, and it's a two-week program that they're incorporating into the school, so it should be wrapping up soon or by next week. And it's been a lot of fun for the kids. I hear from my daughter every day, and I know that Maple Shade has done it also, and I think Birchland did something along the lines.
Similar things, yeah.
But also, because I've noticed in the room, in the hallway, they had all these things that the kids were grateful for, and little post-it notes up against the wall. So, it's really neat to see that going on in our schools now. And.
I was able to contribute to that U Matter wall with a thankful sticky note.
Yeah, that's really neat.
Everybody puts something that they're thankful for up on that wall.
Yeah. So, like, the entire wall is plastered in the sticky notes. It's not just, like, sporadic, it's all over.
It's all.
Yeah. So, that's all I have, so that's on to you, if there's anything you'd like to share.
Just had to say, my daughter's done the Maker Space a couple times this fall, and she loves it. I think they run to sign up for it and hope that you're going to be on it. And that Birchland actually just did a candor that was quite successful. And speaking of winter concerts, Birchland's is next Wednesday.
Oh.
It's coming.
I know.
It's the concert season.
And then, we also have the Thursday night is the youth safety.
Youth safety panel speakers night. There are three different informational sessions, and people would rotate through all three. Each one lasts about 20 minutes.
What date is that?
That's on Thursday night.
This Thursday.
The 7th.
What time?
Starting at 6:00 PM.
Okay. A lot going on.
Yeah.
All right, so that's all for committee and subcommittee communications. We're moving down to the opportunity for visitors to address the committee. No, okay, so we can move on. We have nothing under superintendent's report, correct?
Nope.
So, we'll be moving on to assistant superintendent for business report. Mrs. Anir is not here this evening, but I understand that you're going to be covering her.
I will.
Oh, next one, I'm sorry.
Yep.
I'm ahead of myself, sorry.
No worries.
So, we have 5.2.1, which is a Mountain View gift.
That's correct. So, in your packet is a letter from Elaine Santinello, principal at Mountain View. They have received an anonymous gift of $300, with a matching gift of $300 from their business to be used for educational materials, and they would like the school committee to approve that, so they can get them in their gift account.
Well, we're going to name the business. I forget what we decided on that. Yes, no?
Do they want it anonymous?
I know the family wanted to stay anonymous.
Yeah, I understand, okay. So, I'll move that we accept the $300 gift from parents with a matching $300 gift from their company for education materials.
Okay, motion made.
Second.
And second, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. Carries forward 5-0.
Wait, what was the response to positive?
Excellent. So, we have 5.2.2, which is a new grant, so it's a title four grant, so if you'd like to discuss that.
That's right. So, I've given you the list again. Back in September, you approved the grant list. However, the one that I've highlighted there in green is the only one that you need to approve tonight, and that's a new entitlement. It's a federal entitlement grant, which is for student support and academic enrichment. And the goal will be to increase the use of technology, I'm sorry, technology-based instructional practices with students by improving the student-to-computer device ratio. I believe that's going to be at the high school.
And we're going to use this. If you remember back in one of our September meetings, we gave you the student-to-device ratio, and at our 2, 3 through 5 schools, we're getting very close to having a 1 to 1 ratio, which is great. So, teachers can plan and know that there will be computers available to utilize in their daily lessons. At the middle school, it's probably our next closest, although it's a little bit larger gap than the 2, 3 through 5 schools. But at the high school, it's our largest school. We actually have the worst ratio, and so we really need to start to build there. And what we found, although we want to keep a mixed platform of having mobile carts of Macs and having PCs, your most economical purchase have been the Chromebooks, similar to what Cheryl is using at your places. And so, this grant will help us start that process of making that ratio a better, closer to 1 to 1 ratio.
So, the amount is $6,555.
That's, every bit helps.
Yes, it does.
Every bit helps, absolutely.
All right, so we just need a motion.
Move to accept the title four grant in the amount of $6,555 for student and academic support.
Great, thank you. Motion's made. And second, any further discussion on that? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. Carries forward 5 to 0. Thank you. We have 5.2.3, which is the fiscal year 18 first quarterly budget report.
So, in your packet, as Deirdre just said, is your FY '18 first quarter financial report, so that means it's as of September 30th. In here, I just want to remind everyone that the budget amount is $29,195,201, of which $3,349,148 has been expended as of September 30th, and $22,923,06 has been encumbered as of September 30th. If you go to page 4, where I've got the, I mean, I always write a little narrative just to remind you about the different grants and budget lines. But if you go to page 4, where you, at the top, you'll see the salaries. You'll see the breakdown here and where we stand, and everything's looking very, very good. You can see that the year-to-date expended in the middle of the page there for salaries is $2.5 million, and the encumbered is $20 million. I just want to remind everyone that we do encumber salaries in our Munus software system. Most salaries are encumbered, and some of the hourly employees that are not, okay? The bottom section is the expense side of the budget, and you'll see there, year-to-date expended is $773,000, and encumbered is $2.2 million. So, again, that goes back to those figures that I first sent you with the original. Is there any questions on any of those?
I have a question on the next page.
Oh, sure. So, the next page, we have the grants and the revolving accounts. And again, I want to remind everyone that this is as of September 30th, so with the grants, there's not a lot of activity there since the, you know, the school year had just started. So, you'll see the federal grants, and then the state grants. I was looking for the new one that I, the Title IVs. You'll see the $6,500 there, and nothing expended, because of course, we needed the approval. Down the bottom section, the revolving accounts, those are set up a little bit different than the grants, because first, I wanted to show you what was carried forward from last fiscal year, because revolving accounts do roll over from one fiscal year to the next. So, if we start with the athletic revolving, I just would like to remind you that those are athletic fees and gate receipts that come in. Do you want me to say each individual amount, or just?
No.
We don't have to, right? But you will see that the $31,000 there, so that is from the athletic fees and gate receipts to date as of September 30th there. A lot of fees come in over the summer for the sports, once the teams are set in place. Okay, the other one, athletic stadium rental, you'll see that a little bit of funds have started to come in there compared to what it was, you know, a year or two ago, and you'll see that increase. All of them have healthy balances. The circuit breaker funding, as you can see, we rolled over $781,000. The receipts did not show up for the first quarter. It came in on October 3rd, so I just thought that was.
That was my question.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Why don't you say negative?
It's supposed to be September 30th, but.
That's the only one.
Yeah, it came in on 10-3. And school lunch has a very healthy balance there.
Yeah, it's super healthy.
That's always a question, I know. So, I did talk with Lori Paul, and she wanted to let you all know that there is a 52% participation rate, which is really great with a school lunch. There's, the three-month required balance that we always talk about is about $235,000. And then, in talking to her, there are a lot of items that she is planning to purchase, some of which I'll just rattle off for you, so that you understand how quickly this money adds up. The high school refrigerator needs a condenser for $7,500. The melt cooler at Meadowbrook and Maple Shade, melt cooler, I'm so sorry, is $3,500. The freezer at Maple Shade is $3,800. Aprons and shirts for the staff, $5,500. Computer program upgrades, $28,500. Mountain View walk-in fridge, $15,000, needs severe repairs. Meadowbrook, the old dishwasher repairs, $3,000. Mountain View serving line sneeze guard, $3,200. Very important.
That is very important, yeah.
High school needs two new hot holding boxes at $4,800. I mean, the list goes on, but it all adds up to about $150,000 there, so you can see that. And also, the other thing I just want to remind everyone of is, we do take the online payments, so there's about $30,000 in prepays, so that's a part of the whole balance there as well.
The food service director does not, she doesn't have sole discretion on expending those funds?
Well, when you say sole discretion.
So, the $28,500 on the software program.
Yep. She'll bring that forward.
That's actually the point of sale, software that runs all our cash registers. And it allows for not only the debit system, but the online payments and so forth.
The $28,000?
So, I'm assuming that's a software annual cost.
That's correct, and yes.
That can't be an annual cost. You're not spending $28,000.
No, I think it's for a total, she's not very happy with the current system she has in. Having a lot of issues, which I'd rather not name the vendor at this point in time. So, she's speculating that she may need that kind of money for. And no, that always comes.
Revamp it all the computers.
That's correct. And no, that would always come forward. She always meets with me every month, and Gordon, we go over those things. And I would think that that type of item would be coming forward, maybe even to the school committee.
I mean, I don't know that we've ever seen anything from food. No, we never have. And so, these are big dollar amounts. The other one was the walk-in fridge.
Yeah.
Even when she bought the van.
Just some of these, yeah, that didn't come to us. Well, the van did come to us. But no, we didn't, we didn't talk about how we're going to pay for it, did we?
No, she has the money in the budget to pay.
No, I know that now.
But it broke it out.
Yeah, we did.
No, we don't.
We should talk about it, yeah.
We just discussed it, but I don't think we.
We did, we voted on it.
Yeah, we did. How to pay for it.
It was actually.
Well, I think they were able to, like, the old one.
We turned in the old one. It was done actually prior to Mrs. Blair joining us. It was Mrs. Solajars had outlined the whole thing.
Right.
And it was a three-year lease.
Right.
To.
Right, that's right.
So, I mean, I don't have any concerns in any of the accounts. I think we have very healthy balances, and things are going very well. I would remind everyone that this is September 30th, and that this is a snapshot in time. And the account balances are always changing, because things do come up in our daily basis.
If you'd like, you can bring larger purchases.
I don't necessarily want to micromanage it, but I think larger amounts like that, yeah, you should have, even, I just want to really make sure that.
Absolutely.
You both are looking at it, not just, not just one person. I guess this is really.
That's right. And it does go through our warrant system, so things are always looked at, not only here by me, but by the town side as well, the town accountant's office.
What was that software amount? Did it go over where it has to?
No, the procurement law.
Yeah.
No, it did go over the amount.
Procurement, now $30,000.
Right, sound business practice, get three quotes.
They change, yeah, it is.
So, is it 30 now?
That's a lot.
$30,000, no.
That's a lot for programs, for POS programs.
Did we have to check out all the cash?
That must be what it is. It's got to be hardware, too.
I think it is. I know that she's very unhappy with her current system, and she's been trying, this has been a couple of years since I've come in, that I've known that she's been struggling and trying to work with them, and so, obviously, she's anticipating that this very well may need to be changed.
Does Ryan Quinby involve in something like this?
I would think he would be, yes.
Hope you could double-check on that, because I just took more.
I absolutely will.
Yeah, actually, he has to be involved, because then we have to.
It's tied into the.
Integrate the student information system at all the schools into their point-of-sale system, so you can populate the students. Yeah, so, and hopefully, he's involved on selecting the vendor. We can check that.
Yeah, because that is a lot of money.
And what I can tell you is, every week when I'm approving requisitions in the system, I keep very good communication with Ryan on all of the softwares that the school has. I'm always sending him, and he could, sometimes I'm like, Ryan, am I driving you crazy? But no, he really appreciates it, and I always want him to be on board with what we're doing, make sure that, you know.
Yeah, okay.
The other question I had was on the kindergarten tuition revolving. We haven't encumbered that yet.
Oh, yeah, thank you. I wanted to remind you about that. I'm glad you brought that up. Kindergarten revolving, that is how we were able to get that additional kindergarten right before school started. And so, you don't see any receipts coming in there, and the expenses, so no, I hadn't at this point, as of September 30th, I hadn't.
But aren't we paying for the staff member?
That's, that's correct.
But we don't encumber necessarily here?
It's probably me that hadn't put it into place. So, I'll take, on the next quarter, you should see that rectified.
It'll be way out.
But I do want to remind everyone that those funds are going to be gone at the end of this fiscal year.
Will exhaust that whole?
It's part of the.
Well, I think that's what we anticipated, right? When we did.
We have funds that we were hoping to use for next year, knowing that Unit A, but a decision was made, and rightfully so, to have that kindergarten.
Right, but is that going to exhaust the whole?
It is going to, because it's not just the teacher. There are two pairs I can leave in there.
Yeah.
And some kindergarten supplies. That's right.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Do we need to approve that?
I make a motion to accept the FY '18 first quarter budget report as presented by assistant superintendent for business.
All right, motion's made. I'll second. And second, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. Carries forward 5-0. Great, very much.
Thank you.
Okay, now, here, I jumped ahead of myself a little bit. Now, the assistant superintendent for curriculum and instruction report, the 5.3.1.
Okay, so in your packets, Mrs. Anir has outlined some feedback, it looks like this. All of you, it looks like you have it online, good. Feedback and some of the response from all of our faculty who participated in the professional development day on November 7th. As you can see, that first section is around the keynote speaker, Todd Nesloney. And Mrs. Maye, you were, you were just commenting on how dynamic a speaker it was.
Yeah, he was very good. He was very good.
Interesting pieces to his introduction was he calls himself the lead learner and principal of the school he's at, lead learner. So, very much, he was talking about how to build a community within your school where everyone's learning and everyone's growing. And then, he did had, he had the entire district in the auditorium, and people were engaged for two straight hours.
Yeah.
It was very impressive. And you can see in some of the responses, I mean, 95% would recommend the PD, 99% thought the presenter was active and engaging, 86% said that it increased their content knowledge, 95% said they were going to change something that they do in their classroom, and 95% said what they learned will positively impact students, all of which is what we want out of professional development. And then, we broke from the keynote speaker to basically 34 breakout sessions, predominantly run by our own faculty members. Mr. Mackey ran one, it was well-attended, and I think people were quite engaged in it. And you can see the results there, for the most part, in the 80s and high 80s, in terms of recommending the PD, changing something that they do in their own classroom, and positively impacting students. So, our hope is that we're going to build on that success. So our hope is that we're going to build on that success. On February 7th, we will offer something very similar, but we'll have a keynote speaker and attached in here is a quick bio on that speaker.
What's that name for me? Has she been here before?
Lisa Decker? Lisa Decker's been in the area before, but I don't believe she's been to our schools before. But she has been around and has been utilized by LPVC districts for professional development. So Dr. Decker will be with us as our keynote speaker. And we've put out, um, the request for presenters. We have some who are already interested in continuing and doing some, something similar to what they presented on November 7th. We have some that will carry over, where it actually was a two or a six-hour, if you will, PD session, so it's going to carry over to the next time. But we have to fill probably close to 20 to 25 slots.
So we're going to replicate what we did in November 7th.
Excellent.
With, if, if everyone comes through.
That's the plan.
That is the plan.
That's the plan.
And I think if you look, and I think, because I spoke with Mrs. Anier just a couple of days after, I think when you see things blacked out on here, I think they were just ones that got canceled that day where they just didn't have enough numbers.
If you don't have enough people signing up, then, but still, this was-
Yeah.
Yeah, this is good.
I really, the, just the vibe after that PD speaker, the teachers come out, they all loved it. The days following that I was in the schools, the compliments that I had coming towards me was so positive, saying this was some of the, it was like the best PD they'd had in, and this is coming from some of our veteran teachers, saying it a very long time. And I know that, I always say Mountain View because that's where I have a student. I know right away they wanted to get their Twitter page up and running again, and they're starting to have some students do some of the Twitter to really understand, like, to really understand how to utilize the social media and what makes it a good page and how to really showcase what they're doing in the schools.
Todd Nuslone does a lot of that in his own school. And so he, it's an elementary school, and he talked about having student social media interns.
Right.
And so each week he has two students who work with him to decide what's going to go on the school's Twitter page.
Right.
And they go out and they look at the different activities going on in the school, and then they come back with their photographs and they talk about what captions they should be writing, what pictures should go up, maybe what pictures should not go up.
Do your teachers like to see you, like, like to be seen from that angle?
Right.
Yeah, it was very funny. And, or actually, the high school too, I think also has two student interns that take charge of, yeah, the social media.
Where's he from?
He's from Texas.
Texas.
He's been National Educator of the Year, National Principal of the Year, and both Texas Principal of the Year and Texas Teacher of the Year.
Because I'm starting to see some, some stuff about the national conference, and he may be, the national conference next year, next spring is in San Antonio when-
I'm sure, I'm sure he'll be a speaker.
Yeah.
He had the opportunity to, he was lured away from his previous district with the idea that you can build your school. So he had the opportunity to hire the staff, set the tone in terms of what's the vision and the mission, and that's really taken hold. And so it's, it's been great.
Good.
Excellent.
Excellent.
Thank you, Lou.
Great to hear.
Thank you for the update on that.
Uh, school committee invited until February 7th?
Absolutely.
Is that a Tuesday again now?
Um, see, this one was a-
A Wednesday?
Nice, okay. This one was a Tuesday, this, the next one's a Wednesday.
Beautiful.
We don't try to stay on the same day.
That's, that's why, you know that.
Right, you need to schedule it. All right, so we are moving, are we all good? Any other questions?
Nice, nice.
Perfect. All right, so moving on to new business, we have 7.1, Maple Shade 4th Grade Field Trip.
Okay, um, in your packets, you have a memo from Mr. Fredette outlining their field trip to the Connecticut Science Center. And he breaks out the learning standards as well as their timeframe for leaving and coming back, and that they would have roughly 14 adults accompanying them, approximately 100 students, six of the adults most likely would be staff members, and then probably parent volunteers.
He doesn't give the class, was it a class per student?
Um, I can find that out. I don't, don't know the class per students.
No, I don't think it's a lot. They do this all the time.
Yeah, but normally we get like that second sheet that shows paperwork.
There is a sheet missing here.
I move that we approve the Maple Shade 4th Grade Field Trip to the Connecticut Science Center in half of Connecticut on February 15th, 2018.
Okay, motion's made. I'll second. And second, any further discussion? I want to go. Yeah, okay. You can be one of the speakers. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. And that carries forward 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have 7.2, this one's good, the ELPS agreement with the East Long Meadow Rec Department.
Okay, so this actually is arriving a little bit later than it usually arrives, but for good reason. We've had a working group that consisted of Mrs. Blair, Ms. Minard, the Town Finance Director, Ms. Sawyer, and Mr. LaRoca from the Rec Department, Mr. McGee, our Athletic Director, and at various times, Town Manager, Ms. Minard, and anybody I'm missing in that?
HR Director, Kim.
Oh, and HR Director. So it's been a large, and in some cases, smaller, working group. But basically, we've looked at the agreement and how it's, the fields and the different resources we have are being utilized by both the School Department and the Rec Department. And we've looked at the agreement, which actually was drafted probably over 10 years ago.
Oh, much longer than that.
Longer than that.
More than 15 or 20 years ago. So what we've tried to do is create an agreement that could be a three-year agreement and then recognize that the, some of the amounts that were put into the original agreement now are probably no longer viable in terms of transferring $12,000 two different times during the year to cover overtime costs. And so that's why at the beginning you see that, we realized that this fiscal year budgets are already set, and so we've kept it at the $24,000. Last year, I believe, in tracking it much more closely, we were just over $24,000 for overtime costs, it was like $24,400 something. So we reviewed all of that. Next year, we will go to $25,500, and then the final year of the contract would go to $26,000, with the understanding that we will be tracking it as closely as we have been the last few years. And so if something's completely out of what we've defined here, we have the agreement that we will sit down again and talk about that. Another highlight that I would bring to your attention is that I think we've created a, a much better way to look at how, especially in the summertime, we're utilizing the, particularly the turf field, both for rec programs, but then also for programs that might come in to use it that aren't necessarily either rec or schools. And we have it outlined where that can happen and that the money that's taken in would go to, to the second page.
I'm sorry, I was just saying, I said, sorry about, we-
We talked about.
We increased the amount of rentals a couple, is it with the Athletic Subcommittee?
We did increase the rental amounts. This is now putting that money into a revolving account, recognizing that, which basically our rentals, especially during the school year, have always gone into revolving account. This is now cementing that in the agreement, and that there's an understanding that that revolving account, specifically the one that's for field rental, is going back to the field, which benefits both the schools and the Rec Department. And so that's a little bit more clearly outlined. And then throughout the process, hopefully it's reflected in the document, but I was very impressed with not only the open communication, but what a great relationship Mr. McGee has with the Rec Department. And so that's gone really well.
That's important.
Because there's a lot of scheduling that happens throughout the school year, for that matter, throughout the summer.
Yeah.
You know, we're into basketball season, and it's not just scheduling the gyms for high school athletics, now you're scheduling it for the entire rec youth basketball program.
Right.
That's, that's a good amount of work.
Excellent. All right, so-
This is a three-year agreement? Three-year agreement.
Is the custodial contract changed in terms of time and a half, double time, within our three-year contract?
Custodian's contract is good for this year and next year, and we've covered it with the rates at the bottom that we project.
That reflects this year and next year?
Yeah.
Because it says FY '18 rates, but that'll change in '19? But we don't reflect that in the agreement?
I believe we did multiply that out so that we, that's why we came up with the 25.5 and 26,000.
Is that the range?
Yeah, exactly. We tried to take that into consideration, there's a few, like retirees, so new-
Right, so, but in F/A section, or line-
See, it just says FY-
Paragraph F, it's A, it's FY rates. So, but that's more than just the FY '18 rates then? That's '19, we don't have '20 yet, but?
Uh, we could put '19 in there, but that was one of the reasons why we bumped it up to 25.5.
But is, is that 53.19 reflective of the '19 rate?
No, there would be a slight increase. You know, it'd be 53 something.
Do we know what that is, based on the contract?
I think they're 2%.
We don't know on the contract?
Yeah, it's a 2%.
Does it matter that we have it in here or no?
Well, I thought we covered that. We worked so hard on this, but apparently-
No, it's great, no, it's good.
I, I don't think, I mean, we've, we've set these amounts, we felt comfortable with them.
The larger, oh.
Right.
Yeah, and, you know, there's-
Well, should we take it out then?
Take out the rate?
I don't mean to change it on you. I'm just, if we're, we don't want to apply the F-18, FY '18 rate to FY '19.
To the FY '18.
No, you're going to apply whatever fiscal year you're in.
Is it appropriate?
Is what's going to be charged, yeah.
But I think what you're saying is it doesn't say that.
Doesn't say that.
Right.
You're right, that's a good point.
I just want to put a far example in there.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, it might be worth sending it back and then we revise it and bring it back to you for final.
For final.
Well, I mean, we could just make a change.
Well, you can change.
We don't know the number, though. We, that doesn't matter.
Sorry, the contract is not-
Well, if we just say it's per contract.
Per contraction.
You say, oh, it's a per, so we're probably going to take out that parenthesis.
Take it out.
Or, or-
Yeah, just take out the parentheses.
Right, but it's subject to time, you can, I don't mind the, depending on the time and a half or double time rates for holidays and Sundays.
Yeah.
That's worth saying, I think.
Right. You just can't, if you're going to do a three-year fiscal year contract, you can't.
State that rate.
You can't basically state the FY '18 rate.
Right.
Yeah, that's a valid suggestion.
You don't want to hold, I mean, otherwise they could hold us to that number.
Right.
It doesn't matter because the final number is the final number, I suppose, so.
No, but it makes sense to take it out.
No, it makes, makes a lot of sense to take it out. And I think it's probably been there all the way through, and we were so close to it. When we expanded to a three-year contract, we never expanded to that era.
Oh, yeah, right, yeah, that's why.
Because it started out as a one-year contract. And I said, does it make sense to, maybe since we've done all this work, to look at it over three years and increase the amount over those three years?
Oh, so we won't see this again for three years, I think.
Right, unless we see something drastically different. We're tracking it in my office here. When the custodial time sheets come in, I'm making sure that they're, you know, they're charged appropriately, that there's not an error there. So that's how we came up with the figure last year, that it was about $500 short, is what it was to cover that overtime.
Right.
So to that point, though, do we have a clause that says that?
Well, what it says is we're going to evaluate it each year, if, if need be, that we can come back to the table.
It says at the top, it says, agreed, the expenses will be tracked each year, and the amount will be reviewed each year to ensure that the fee is close to the actual cost.
And the only other thing I would just like to add is it was, it was a very good team, you know, collaboration, and Kevin, you know, created a list of things that, like the athletic department purchases, you know, across the board, and then Lindsay created this list, and honest to goodness, at the bottom, it was almost like an exact amount. So I just thought it was interesting to know that, you know, both departments are putting in to the town of East Long Meadow pretty evenly, so we decided, I did not want to be nitpicky about custodial supplies or anything like that, it's way too much work for, it just is, so that we stated that in here, and, and it's, it's, you know, we think like a user-friendly agreement, and a lot of things were covered, and so.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's cool.
All right, so do we want to approve this minus that parenthesis and that it doesn't have to come back to us?
Right.
Has the Rec Commission approved this yet, or are they waiting for us, or?
No, no, it actually now is going to be the school committee, and so the Chair would eventually sign it if the school committee approves, Superintendent, Town Manager, and Rec Director. Because the Rec Commission is basically advisory to the Town Manager.
Okay.
So it's different then?
All right, okay.
So can we then make the statement of how you want to change, how we should have it, how it should read?
Right, we should. Can I just?
I think so, yeah.
Can we just take out the FY '18 rates, 30 to 53.19 per hour? So it would read overtime pay for custodian services will be applied at the custodial union contract rate, depending on time and a half or double time rates for holidays and Sundays. Because really, they're, it's only subject to-
The year, the fiscal year.
After hours, so it's not like an hourly rate. It's only going to be time and a half or double time.
Right.
Right.
All right. So I'll move that we approve the East Long Meadow Public School Agreement with the East Long Meadow Recreation Department with one amendment to Section F/A and remove the parentheses and FY '18 rates are $30 to 53.19 per hour? Or do you want me to go the other way? Kathy, what do you think? Is that the wrong way to go?
Go the other way.
Should I say what it should be?
You've got to put the language.
Thank you, that's-
That should read, say what it should, yes, right.
Let me stretch, Kathy, I'm sorry.
Yeah, say what it should read.
So I'll move that we accept the East Long Meadow Public School Agreement with the East Long Meadow Recreation Department with the one amendment for F, Section A, to read overtime pay for custodial services will be applied at the custodian union contract rate, depending on time and a half or double time rates for holidays and Sundays.
Perfect. Okay, motion's been made.
Second.
And second, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. And that carries forward 5-0. Thank you. Perfect. All right, coming down towards the end, we have 7.3, the start and end date for the 2018-2019 school year calendar.
All right.
Okay, so you have a draft calendar, and actually, we've been able to, with the help of the ELPS Collaborative Committee and the leadership team, have been able to add more dates than just the start and end date. So you have the convocation date in August 27th, and then the start of school would